Well, for the last three years.
And you missed a couple of them. So Stacy wasn't here. You missed a couple.
Thirty-one years. And we've been lunched to thirty-four every time out. So for the last three years, we've been as proud as we wanted.
Wherever you want.
Yeah, that's three years. Three years.
I don't think we get as proud today as we was last time.
So we didn't know what it was.
There were two different cases.
That is.
There we go. You got something on that twice. And there's one vote that doesn't mean. Four, four zero. Yeah, alright. Twenty-two dash twenty-two zero.
Four zero.
Cause we're all working on that same font.
Yeah.
So that's good. Well, I mean, we went both ways yesterday. I didn't mark those. Alright, everybody start. Alright, I called this meeting of the young county commissioners court to order and let the record show it is nine thirty-three AM. All five members of the court are present. We're streaming live on our YouTube channel and if you're watching and you'd like to call in and make a comment, you may call in at nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for implication of pledge, Commissioner Shook has the honors.
That's great. Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. We thank you for the rain that's coming. And Lord, we just ask that you be with us today during these meetings, Lord. Father, we pray for those that lost loved ones. We pray for those who have sickness and disease. We just pray you heal, Father, and touch those that are hurting. And Lord, we just, we just ask for wisdom and knowledge today, Father. And Lord, I just, I just pray for the men of this court, Lord. I just thank you for their values and their hard work that we put in, Father. And Lord, to make this county the best, the best county in the state of Texas, Father. You just continue to guide us and direct our steps, Father. And we just ask all these things in your holy name. Amen. I do lead. To the life of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and deftly, our pleasure allegiance to the heat Texas. One nation under God, one indivisible.
Thanks Scott. Alright, let's move to item number three, public comments. Are there any public comments today?
I got one real quick.
Please.
Let's get some somewhere. Keeping our options on all this abatement stuff. Doing a little research and I don't know if y'all are. We said the city doesn't have anything, any options. But there is such a deal as EDJ, which is an extraterrestrial jurisdiction, which extends three miles from the city limits. Now, our city limits go all the way up to top of Spide Hill, the airhead road. That's well within the three miles of this projected data center. So can you anything out of the city?
The city, the city is trying to figure out what all their options are right now. They are, they are in the process of trying to figure out what they, what they can do.
But that is, that is an option that nobody's explored yet. I'm just going off of that there, stuff I've researched. And then with the, all the scuffle about this going around about the hydrogen stuff, the plug power settling off their stuff to stream. The question that I've got, and I don't know if anybody has answered, Citymate, y'all probably don't, and I don't. But if the hydrogen deal was made with the city, then the city should have, because the way all, the way the plug power deal is doing, the other, they're canceling, they're shutting down the hydrogen stuff and selling their water rights to stream. So I don't know how that ties together with the city making the deal with the hydrogen plant. If they got to be in on the whole water channel rights and all, I don't know.
So with the city being a, and I can't remember what the term is, but they're a, since they're a, I can't think of what the, what the way, the way they described it. Plug can't sell that, the least the city stands is plug doesn't have the right to sell any commitments to anyone else. They could hook into that line and if there's water available, they could purchase water. But I, the city stands, at least from my understanding and talking to them last week, is they don't believe that plug has the ability to sell anything water related to anybody. That, that was what.
Well, that's just on, this is going on other, other places, isn't it? So whether they had a different setup, I don't know.
But, but that water line was built to that plug facility, so it doesn't, it's not a crazy thought to, to then take a, tap in at that point and then do a pipeline.
All depends on how the contract's written.
And I've, I've never seen the contract.
That's what, I mean.
The difference, the difference is that water line will be owned by a utility company.
That's the word.
Yeah, cause they're a utility company.
Utility company, that's how it got laid because the city is considered a utility on that. So that's gonna be the only way that can be, be done. The city will have to keep the rights to that, and if they want to sell the water, they can sell the water. But that's between them and.
So if that, if that does, if the city has the, the city has the power over that line.
Yes.
Then that means they have power over. They've got some restrictions to who they give it to. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to set it, I'm trying to set a deal here. Our last two, and y'all, most of y'all weren't involved, but the last two deals have not gone good with the abatement. See, if this is enabled and the abatement's come, we don't, we don't need to get screwed. And I know y'all are going and looking at other data centers in other places. But in, at the same time, those counties that have those, hold their abatement in clauses. Learn from their mistakes, learn from our mistakes, don't get screwed by these big time lawyers.
Oh yeah.
I'm, I'm not smart, I'm not smart enough, or people here that are smarter than me. Ain't none of us in here smarter enough to fight them lawyers.
We, we're already a step ahead of you before you do it then.
I read, I read, I read two different ones this weekend that, that were, have been the last twelve, twenty-four months. So I'm starting to see kind, you know, see what.
They use loopholes. We use loopholes.
Yeah.
In anything.
Hundred percent.
It's kind of horse trading. If they start out with a hundred, we start out with zero. Don't just settle on eighty, twenty if that's what somebody else has done.
Yeah.
Just pop those.
Alright.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to talk to you about one thing first, real quick, is the petition that was turned in last week. It's my understanding, I wasn't involved in it, but that petition was vetted to where they took out the people that either weren't a registered voter or did not vote in the last election. So there was a lot more signatures than actually ended up on the petition. I just pointed that out. So I was also gonna tell you, and some of you already know this, my dad was a commissioner up here from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty-four, and then my great grandfather was a commissioner here back in twenty-five, dang for gee. So I know it's a difficult decision. I know you have to keep everybody in mind for this, including the human part of it. And the part I want to talk about right now is the human part. So my wife and I had a difficult discussion last night when we are about to come to the conclusion that this is a futile effort to try to fight this. I'm not gonna give up though. I'll fight it till the end, any way that I can. So we came to a discussion about having to move out of our house. And we know that we're gonna lose a lot of money for the value of our house. So that's already been proven because my neighbor to the west of me is in the room today, has had a couple of contracts to sign to sell her house. She's gonna sell it before this all started. Some of you already know this, but she had two contracts that had to be canceled or were canceled because of the data center completely being closed by. So we had a difficult discussion last night and didn't really come to any conclusions. But it looks like in, we built this house in two thousand and five, so we've been there almost twenty years in December. And so we intended this to be our last house and, you know, if they're to move in with our kids or whatever, when you get older, have to take care of. It's a twilight of our lives. We intended to live our last two years out there in peace and quiet and not where heavy construction equipment is pounding on rocks for the next ten years, twelve, and people driving up and down our highway where I can't even get out of my driveway. I posed that question to, when we had the chamber of commerce meetings with Wayne and Barry. I posed the question, how am I gonna get out of my driveway? And the guy said, well, we might have to put a traffic light on. So explain to me how you're gonna put a traffic light on Lake Road and on my road, and then the other people that they helped sell their house west of me, my neighbor, and then everybody that lives at the country club, and Jim Market that lives on the other side, and the power plant road down there, and then the people on Spide Hill, when all those workers, a thousand to two thousand workers a day are gonna be working on that side out there. And I know what they're gonna be running. Y'all know that I, I was in the stration equipment. I know how loud it's gonna be, I know the dust, I know the smoke, the deep fumes. So that's the human side of this. You will be most likely displacing people like myself that are gonna move. I know another guy that lives down the street from me that has already said his wife was real sick, very ungrateful. He's gonna move if that comes through, for sure. And, you know, most of us will probably end up having to move. So we think, and I've done, I've read so many articles about this, I'm looking at the face about things that can happen. I know that, that you have said, mostly you have said, the tax abatements are gonna be something required. So if we do give a tax abatement, which in my opinion is a corporate gift to their profits, we know that they could have built that same data center ten miles west of town if they wanted to, and it wouldn't have bothered anybody. Pardon me. And they could have run a water line out there for, you know, a couple million dollars or whatever it cost, but it comes out of their profits. So this is just a bigger profit for them to live here, or have a data center here and be able to tap into the groundwater supply. I'm also concerned about groundwater supply, as I know most people in the community are. I'm also concerned about the amount of traffic that's gonna come down Elm Street where we have threats already as it is. And we have, you know, your guys all love to do their, and the rock haulers, we all know that, and we understand that, we kind of live with it. But that traffic is gonna multiply by a large amount. And I don't know the amount yet, but I'm, I'm gonna try to get some research on it and figure out, you know, what that's gonna be like. So I don't think the people, the citizens of Graham and Young County are gonna be very happy if most of them, they can hit, we're rock haulers coming, rolling down Elm Street, and then they're gonna go out two oh nine or FM sixty-one where they already gonna be contracted. They could tell us that they probably have people, you know, directing traffic or whatever, but, you know, unless you have a law enforcement or out there, law enforcement officer out there, you can't really tell somebody to stop, I mean, you know, legally. So it's gonna take, you know, I don't know how many sheriff's, how many hours a day. There's supposed to be three entrances, three entrances, two on FM sixty-one and one on two oh nine from what they told us. So we're looking at, they said maybe ten, twelve years of construction. So ten or twelve years, you know, that's just, I, I moved back to Graham in nineteen eighty-three, been gone, you know, about twelve years. And living in the metroplex, it wasn't fun. I wanted to live where it was peaceful and quiet and, you know, where we can go out and enjoy ourselves outside and not a bunch of road traffic and extra lights, et cetera. So anyway, I just want you to take into consideration the human side of this. It's not just a money decision, it's the human side and the wishes of the voters. Because there's a lot of people that are upset. I, I've encountered people all over town and most of the ones that I've seen or talked to, I realize that's not a good sample, but a lot of them are against the tax abatements and the data center also. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate you guys for some pity, but keep all that in mind if you would, please. I challenged you last week to do some research, and I hope you did that. I'm not gonna ask you individually, but I hope you did that and hope you continue, continue to do that and read all the articles you can to see who's had good or bad. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. I know that we, you've talked about you haven't received a plan or a proposal. When do you expect to see something like that?
So I think that this is from conversations I had with them last week. I, I think they're gonna unveil a website this week that's gonna start putting some information out. I think sometime in December, they're gonna open an office here to, to be able to provide more information. It's, I, you know, I'm not, I don't have any way to pin them down on that. And I'm expecting them to, to push to start some sort of negotiation, maybe before the end of the year. I, I've not received that. I've received questions that, that kind of sounds like they're, they wanna start talking about it, but they don't really talk about it yet. So, but I mean, I, I know it's coming and, but they, they haven't told me when that's gonna actually start. But they, they did indicate that they think a website with like frequently asked questions and stuff like that's gonna come out this week in, in an office within a couple of weeks, you know, early December with, I'm hoping with some drawings, is what I'm hoping.
Will you provide that website to the.
Oh yeah. When, when it's done, I'll promise you, I will blast that out, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Uh, you bet.
Thank you.
I'm from Judy Brown. And I'm surrounded on three sides. And they've not contacted me. So I just need to know that it's a trustworthy company and they're gonna do what they said they'll do. I don't know if they'll use the road beside my house between me and the country club. No, they aren't. I'm not just gonna do this in an office.
And where, where, where do you live?
I live on West the country club.
So. Are you on the, like, on the highway, like on the golf course, sports person?
Okay. Do you know where the, the first entrance is that they're gonna use, propose entry?
I don't know.
You haven't seen a map?
I have not.
I'll send you a map.
I, I mean, I, I, all I, all I've been told is that they were gonna have at least one on sixty-one and one on the Murray Highway, but I have not seen where they proposed it.
Where the golf course is, at the very end of the golf course, there's some open area, pasture area, but not much. And then there's a road that goes through, and they have access to that road. That's where one of the entrances is gonna be.
And is that a private road or a county road?
It's a private road. A private road that they have obtained in the purchase that they're doing. And Judy's road is right next to that road. Explain how far this road is apart.
I'm not sure, but like, there's just a lane and probably two car, I don't know, about like width between me and the golf course. And there was, my, my, or in my house.
So she owns a home, there's a home, if you go by there, there's a home back off the street or the post road about two hundred yards, three hundred yards, something like that. She has that house and how many acres?
Twenty-nine.
So her, her entrance road will be right next to the road that they're gonna build in there. So that's why she's having difficulty, I'll let you tell us that.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know the answer. But I just feel like a good company would come and say, hey, you know, this is what we have, and they haven't. And so I'm gonna know that they're a person if they're aware.
Here's our property, where's just the, the, the right of way, here's the golf course.
So is that the road that they, they have an access, access to?
I don't know. Do they have?
Is that your house?
Yes. And this is the.
That's the road that they have access to?
Right.
And is that, is that where their land starts?
Yeah, that's where their land starts and then it comes down that way. That will be the closest road from the city limits if they would have to, you know, if they made it from almost any direction except.
Is that right before the lake road?
Yes, just right before it, it's on the left. She's got two stone, uh, rock white, uh, entrances right there, close to the highway and her house is, her nice house on the back.
I don't know the answer, but I know, no one has ever said anything to me, I didn't know. You know, I didn't know it was gonna happen. So. Which I know y'all didn't either.
Well, yeah.
But it makes me feel like, you know, are people talking behind your back like about things that you're unaware of? And just the honest, like, you know, I feel like a good company would be honest to the company.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes.
I just thought of what she said. They already have this easement, the land purchased?
So I don't know anything about the easement, I mean, nothing about the easement. But as far as the land, that eight hundred and fifty acres, they have an option to purchase. They have not executed that option, but they have an option to purchase. So they have the right to purchase that land.
I just didn't know if it.
And, and they did tell me that they had, they had a way onto sixty-one and they had a way onto the Murray Highway, but I don't know where that is and I, again, I've not seen any map with a, with a real plan on it. I've just seen a map of what they had option.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
That's on where I, I live, at Murray, lived there thirty years. I've been to a couple meetings, but just when you're talking about they, you're saying they are gonna put a website and I, I don't know everything. So if it's, you're talking to them?
That's Scream. So Scream is the company, the developer, well, that's not totally true. Headwaters is the developer. Scream is the company that operates and manages the data centers. They're two separate companies, but they're, they're the same company. They just have broken one part into the, the development part into the Headwaters side, and then the operations is the Scream side.
Who are you talking to?
It's a subsidiary, I think, is what, how the description does it.
They're probably, they're both subsidiaries of a parent company.
People went that way, correct? And then, rather than with Scream, they, I said, actually were with.
With Headwaters. And they, they're, Headwaters and Scream are sister companies. They're, they're, and, and I've not seen a corporate structure, but, but I honestly, I think everyone I'm talking to is, well, they're probably technically an employee of one side or the other, but it's the same, it's the same. They're the same.
But that's you.
Uh, yeah, when I say they, it's Scream headquartered. They had Scream slash Headwaters. And I, as far as who is who, I'm not really sure, but they, they're all the same. Some people have both a Scream and a Headwaters email. So, I mean, you know, it's like, uh, in the oil business, you had Twin Montana and Echo. One was, went own the oil and gas rights and then Echo was the operating company then. I mean, it's all the same people, but they have two different companies. Anyone else? Alright, thank you. We'll move to item number four. Item number four is discuss and approve the amended county clerk minutes from the previous meeting October fourteenth. The amended minutes are in the packet. I, I believe they look perfect. Anyone have any comments or concerns about that? Alright, so Commissioner Crestwell made a motion to accept. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook. Any, any comment? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, item number five, discuss and consider the county clerk minutes from October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. We looked at those last week, I made a couple of changes. They all didn't quite make it in there. I've given them to Tina, I think Tina's gonna go with them out here in a minute when we take a bathroom break or something. But can we table that? Because I think we can get some, I think we can get some accurate minutes to vote on today. So can we, if everyone's okay to table them now, we'll table it. Item number six, discuss and consider the county clerk minutes from the November fifth, twenty twenty-five town hall meeting in Elizal. Not seen those yet. So we'll, we'll table that to next week, or, or the next meeting. And then, I'll be honest, I just got the minutes for November tenth. I have not had time to read them. I've seen, I've seen one mistake already on the, who did the prayer. But shall we table that? To, to give us all a chance to read them?
Yes.
Okay. So, but I think we can come back and vote on the October twenty-seventh. I think we'll get that here today. Alright, item number seven, consider the treasurer's financial report and updates on securities pledge. Treasurer Mountain.
Okay, emailed on August late Friday, but emailed everybody. Report for October. So you're asking for your.
Now, I, I think we all got a chance to review that.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve Treasurer Mountain's report?
Yes.
Bit of a motion from Commissioner Wiley.
Second.
Good second from Commissioner Craig. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
In October, we also, once we got to October, there was kind of, we closed out the debt service. The move that is suggested by the outside auditor and move that money into the general fund since all of that money was part of the general fund, make that final payment.
So when we.
That should be the last statement.
Yeah.
Go back in the October calendar.
So when we put that in minutes, we need to know that we're voting on the October.
Treasurer's report.
Alright, Ms. Robb, we're on item number nine, budget amendments and vouchers payable.
So we saw the ones from last week. I had F-line twenty-five, we're getting down to where we're at, we almost even had one. It was six thousand three fifteen eighty-two. It was six thousand three fifteen eighty-two.
Okay, that was, all right, so.
This is for.
Six thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-two cents?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Motion from Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, what about officially your twenty-six?
Okay, so FY twenty-six from the tenth total was two hundred and one thousand eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Out of the general fund was a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents, and there was Don's music.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero with Commissioner Wiley abstaining.
So we so for today's bills, they're all FY twenty-six. The total is thirty-three thousand twenty dollars and seven cents. Seven, I'm sorry. Thirty-three thousand twenty dollars and seventy cents, and out of the general fund is nine thousand forty-eight dollars.
Nine thousand.
Oh, four eight.
And what what's this one for?
This is for FY twenty-six for today's.
Oh. Gotcha. Different than last week's, okay.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion for Commissioner Cresswell, second from Commissioner Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, item number ten, discuss and consider the employee bonds. We have Vanessa Correio, county attorney clerk, five thousand dollars. And we had Jessica Edwards, the deputy tax collector, five thousand dollars, both through Merchant Bond Company. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley and a second from Commissioner Craig to approve the two bonds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Sheriff, we're supposed to set that figure on any result.
Yeah, this is the correct figure. I made it to continue.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
That's that's how much it was. It was two thousand.
Yes. It was twenty twenty-six, eighty-four-two.
Yes.
Okay, item number eleven, consider the extension of agent's October report request for reimbursement. Miss Newbarian's one thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Miss Savannah Williams, four hundred and forty-one dollars even. Motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Want to take a restroom break? All right, let's take that ten-minute restroom break. Ten point.
No, I'm just making sure that.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
I remember it being off.
Yeah.
I started my diet again, and so I forget a lot of water, so I'm actually. I'm on my fourth Yeti. Well, either that or.
They're not bringing anymore of that taste.
Like, just for lunch, just like your meal, eat lunch or. That's a good one. That's not the best question.
How are you?
Good.
I'm Joey Stewart.
Charlotte.
I don't know.
How are you?
I haven't met you.
It's a long one.
How you doing?
Hi, it's nice to meet you. Yes.
Do you need copies of that Kilo logic thing again? I made them on copy. I'm going to say there's. They got it.
Did you give them this termination?
I gave them everything I had. Did I have that? If it's with the. This right here on the back.
Yeah, it looks like one.
Any more for mobile games this year? I'm done. I. And then the last two games of the year are, we're going to play, Texas plays on Saturday and then it's Friday, so I'm going to miss about that. Hopefully we have a playoff. Texas still hasn't passed. It's not as easy as it would be, but we still have passed. I want I think that's a good year. I think we're pretty good at that. Yeah, I lost to third time in my career, fourteen months. It's like we can't get past those four days. Very cheap.
Joey, Joey, you got the cameras finished up over?
Yeah. We didn't read them. We read them.
No, this is from last year.
All right, are we ready? All right, so it's ten ten. We're going back into session. So we're at item number twelve, discuss and consider the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department County Vote Agreement. All right, Mrs. Christie Centers was going to present this, but she couldn't make it today. So she sent me some information to read. It says, "Our office processes parks and wildlife for the whole state of Texas. We do registrations and title work. We receive ten percent of the amount of the transactions on registration title and five percent of the boat sales tax that we collect. So far this year, we've collected three thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-two cents. We have processed four hundred and fifty-three transactions. With all the surrounding lakes, we need to continue to provide this service to our customers. While the payout is not a lot for the county, the service we provide is most appreciated, not just for the citizens of Young County, but for those visiting as well. Of the surrounding counties near ours, only Palo Pinto, renewals only; Parker County, renewals only; Stevens County, limited transactions, residents only; are the only ones near and enabling their service. I do hope that we are allowed to continue to do parks and wildlife and keep our community happy and our visitors coming to do business with Young County. Sorry I could not be here to present this information, but I have full confidence and appreciation to Cheryl, misguided, for providing for providing this information to the judge and the commissioners in my absence of going to my VG Young tax assistance office." So she said her training or annual training. And that's, thank you, Christie Centers. So it is a great service that we do provide. And that's, we're kind of in the service business. I did read through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department County Vote Agent Agreement. It looks like a typical standard Texas contract. Well, they changed the address to do it to the to the annex, but I don't see any reason not to do it. Do we have a motion to approve the new Texas Parks and Wildlife County Vote Agent Agreement? So we'll go with Commissioner Craig making the motion and Commissioner Cresswell with the second. You're a little slow to part. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion part passes five zero.
Three thousand eight hundred. Is that from the new year starting already, or is that for a full year?
That's, I believe that's this fiscal.
That's this.
I think that's the fiscal. I have not seen it. Ask her about it. I but I have not seen it. I'd be happy to do it electronically, but. We do an additional copy for them? Yeah, a lot of those, a lot of those emails, I'm a little scared to open because they don't look right when they come.
Yeah.
So it could have come and I've deleted it because I get a lot of emails that I think are virus efficient. Okay, item number thirteen, discuss and consider a three or five-year renewal with the logic from the sheriff's office presented by sheriff.com.
Good morning.
Hey, how are you, Dr. Smith?
So last week, I gave you our copies, I think.
Uh-huh.
The proposals that they had given us to review. And I think even Commissioner Wiley and I had talked about it that day too, that what we don't want to do the best. Definitely you'll look the the five-year public would be the license.
I have one problem with it, though.
Okay.
So the way the contract reads, it says, "Of terminations for convenience, if either party desires to discontinue any service under this agreement beyond the initial term, the party may do so by providing written notice of non-renewal of the particular service by at least sixty days." Perfect. But they define the initial term as the five years.
Yes.
And can we enter into, as a government entity, can we enter into a five-year contract like that? Jimmy?
Not unless we not unless we get a way out.
Right. So I mean, I'm not sure that follows the governmental contract rules. I'm with you, though. I think the five years is the way to go.
Well, we say five thousand dollars over five years, that way.
Yeah.
I mean, although they're increasing that year, add it for five years.
It's more than that. It's.
It's not the proposal. So you're saying we go back to the.
It's about ten thousand dollars over five years. It's about two thousand dollars a year difference.
Going with this count.
Right.
But just as far as their number run, they're, we're paying thirty-one thousand a year, and this is going to jump it up to thirty-five, forty-four, and thirty. So.
I just think we need to have, you know, well, in what's the odds that for five years, that's the way to go, you know?
Right.
I mean, you know, technology is constantly changing and.
So we're compensating, Kolo, you're compensating.
Yes.
Yes. So they're a little bit predatory, no matter what.
Right.
So it'd be different if one, one company and one company. They say support each other, which was the issue that we were having prior to. Do like do that again. Right. So now that they got together, that's probably better.
Do you know how that works?
Exit clauses.
They're supposed to be something that's not budgeted. It's not in the budget to have it for next year or whatever.
Now, I wonder if we can get a, give them the change of termination. Language.
Sure, hopefully.
If they'll change the termination.
Yeah.
Sheriff, so we've got thirty-four budgeted, and that's still a thousand four hundred thirty dollars more. We got budgeted for it.
They probably should run somewhere.
So do you have a.
It's in the discharge budget. It's a whole repaid.
Just give them a shout and see if, or her, whichever, whatever, and see if we can get a, see if we can get that get that termination language changed. If we can, we just have to have some out in the governmental entity that we.
It's safe to do this for other counties.
Yeah.
I think you do that.
I'm sure they know about it, they just try to slip it in.
They just got to slip it in.
Yeah. But I think, I think we want to go with the five years, what we want to go with.
We do because it, I have listed out how much the payments are for five years.
Yeah. You know, what we do, basically, it can be where both sides can terminate. So we enter a five year agreement and both sides, both sides have the right to terminate it. And if they want to change their prices, they can terminate the contract and we, we can terminate it. We just do it that way.
Or flip contract with the ninety day termination being said.
Yeah. But we had to put it in, it was started that month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna table that to allow the sheriff to, to improve the termination language.
The five year. Let me see what they'll do.
I'll hit that here.
So we're gonna table it to the next month?
Yeah.
To the next hundred and twenty-four.
So that my next place.
It is.
We're gonna, yeah, we're, we're gonna discuss it. Right now it's scheduled for next month. We're, that's, we're gonna discuss it again. If it changes, I'll give you confirmation.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so that's tabled. All right, item number fourteen, discuss and consider resolution one thirty-one fiscal year twenty-six, opposing the renewal of the TPDES permit number WQ zero 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 five two one three one, five two one three zero zero zero, and calling for a full and fair contested case hearing to protest the interest of, of the affected communities from the PK Lake Association. Read through all that last time. I'll read through it again if people want us to, but I know we all were in favor of supporting Possum Kingdom Lake and the protection of the water, so.
Well, I mean, when Abilene Lake is at four percent right now.
They should be putting it back.
They should be putting it in their own lake. But that's what they said at, right now is at four percent.
We have a motion to approve the motion. We have a motion from Jimmy Wiley and a second from Stacey Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, item number fifteen, discuss and consider estimates from CCS Customs to tint the windows in the only annex. Joey and Tom are here to discuss this. I know Alan laid eyes on it last week, so. Joey, you want to pick us off?
So I did visit with Commissioner Craig and Tom and we're discussing, you know, I have the twenty-five hundred in the furniture line up. So what I'd like to do is use that twenty-five hundred. And then Tom has agreed to put the twelve-five and take the remainder of the balance out of that twelve-five.
To do the full?
To do the full. That way it looks the same on both sides.
I think, I think that's a good way, such, you guys have done such a good job in the building. It looks so good.
And it's definitely painted. A lot of it is quite intense.
We had asked for that, that, that management money, that construction money, so that we could offset some of the costs of the government, the tag office over. That project's already started. We're, we're still good with that. We're, we thought we had a bulletproof transaction window. This communication, don't have it. We're having to go up to five one. And I do need specs on what y'all have here so that I make sure we've got the same.
Got your man right there.
We'll work on that. That's, that's what that money's gonna be for, is to put that window in. Everything else we're taking care of, but that's, that's where that money was scheduled to go, so. And, and we may not need all of that, but if y'all could do that, that would be great. And that would hit all of that down. And it was, you know, four, it's a great way to go.
Joey, who was six and ten it already? I hear the annex. And looking at what they did with the, the six eight and all. They had those windows tinted already. From over three miles up there. They look nice.
The city.
Well, they did mirror, we did do mirror.
So to keep J.P. Stewart from having to splint in the office? Do we, do we have a motion to partner with the, on the Economic Improvement Commission to go with the thirty-eight, three, three thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollar bid? A motion from Alan Craig. It's a second from Jimmy Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
All right, item number sixteen, discuss and consider the pricing proposal contract from I three verticals LLC regarding online deed records presented by Tina Gilliam. Tina?
These, both of these, I think should be in the packet, but this is what we had discussed during budget for online deed records. So not only can we come in and file, so right now that's the only way. I mean, we have to have originals over the counter or mountain and whatever. This is gonna open it up to different attorneys, people out of state, like we, we had discussed.
To be able to search?
To be able to file.
Up to file, okay.
Over, over e-file. It's gonna take away a lot of the, uh, time consuming duties of our girls now and towards, because they literally have to go in and stamp each individual document. I mean, there's sometimes we get deeds that are two hundred pages long and, I mean, they literally have to be individually stamped. Through this program, it all, it gets stamped, gets scanned into the system. Everything gets stamped and all brought together. So that's what this one is and we did discuss this one in the budget and I was just needing that contract sign.
Which, so, did we, did we budget for all of this? Is it all in the budget?
Yes.
Are you gonna talk about the addition of the I three verticals? Yeah, one for that data.
My question on that is.
Management for the fifty-two thousand that we budgeted.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So.
Question on that.
Forty-four.
Is this one of the, of filing five three? Because I mean, all of that you get from five three, I'll loan it now.
So. One, one of them is co-file. That one is the fifty-four. This one is.
This one's for the I four hundred is the three verticals.
Yeah, the annual maintenance on that one is almost sixteen thousand.
That's what you're gonna do on the O three six, the county.
Yes, yes.
If we based in fifty-two thousand.
Well, here, I mean, they can bring fake deeds in.
Well, I mean, they're doing it online, is what they're doing.
Yeah, but.
That's what we're setting up for, ain't it? To do it online.
To do it online. But they can bring them, they can bring them in and file them just as easy as they call them online. On this, there's gonna be two different authentications that it has to go through. When they present them online, they're gonna have to present their ID and they'll be, well, actually three authentications because it'll go through two of those and then us as well, so.
Don't like it here.
No, 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 I don't either.
So what's the difference?
We're not making it harder.
What's the difference between the I three proposal and the co-file proposal?
So the co-file proposal is just for all the deed records from nineteen fifty-one.
Those are the old ones.
The old ones. Those have to be archived. So as of right now, from nineteen fifty-one forward, we have archived. There, we have a thumb drop on all of, all of that everything. We actually have three different, three different storage places for those. Nineteen fifty-one and back, by law, we have to keep those. We can't get rid of those from nineteen fifty-one and back. And there has to be a secondary archive for those and we don't have that right now, so.
So did we budget for both the archive and the all? In for the I three moving.
No, we only budgeted for I three verticals because the, the deeds, the nineteen fifty-one and back will come out of the archive deed, that'll be paid and all.
But we have a, we have, we have a budget item for the archive deed.
Did we have the O one one here?
Yeah, for an archive account. And that, that dropped from a little over eighty thousand down to fifty-four thousand, so they did get that front.
Good.
So we budgeted in the county clerk archive thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand.
But we have, but there's, there's money in that budget, in, in that archive budget that's, that's sitting there, right?
Yes, there's two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Gotcha, so we just need to do a budget amendment. It's, it's, it's just pulling money that's already sitting there for a purpose.
We weren't gonna do this all in one year, so our, their plans, our co-file plan was to do half of it and then, so that way it doesn't just get all in one.
And then what do we budget for the, going forward, the digital, the digital archiving? For the digitizing the new deeds?
Forty-two thousand.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
That's what we have in the budget for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then that'll be recurring annually, fifteen thousand annually.
Well, let's break these up because the, the archiving is gonna require a budget amendment.
We're gonna vote on that till we get to budget amendments.
Yeah. And like I said, it'll only be probably half this year.
See, if it is, and there's, you've got the thirty-eight thousand and then there's another.
And that's what we talked about, doing half this year and half next.
We're gonna table the co-file.
You're not gonna do the fifty-four about on co-file?
No, well, not all at once, we just have.
Oh, that's, that, that's the total project, right?
That's the total project.
And that's, that's not breaking it out by what's this year and what's next year?
No, 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 that's the total.
You're gonna do the thirty-four, nine, ninety-two one?
Yes, to the gift. Cause it, it's gonna, it's gonna take them a couple of years to, to get all that done.
There's thirty-eight thousand.
Okay, then we can vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can vote.
All right, so, okay, let's do the I three one first. So we have a motion to approve the I three verticals contract, which comes out to be a total of forty thousand four hundred dollars for this, to be implemented this budget year. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. We have a second. Second from Alan Craig. Commissioner Craig?
All in favor?
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
And then this, this was in the packet, but it's, it's just a couple of all printed together. So y'all could look over it too and see exactly what, what they're doing, so.
So, but you know, does it, but it doesn't break it out by year though, does it?
No, but we don't sign this one and all that will break it out.
So then it's a deed trust.
Yes, all the deed trust records, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna agree to table the co-file to where we can get it broken out by year just so that we can fit it into our budget. So we'll table that, vote on that. Perfect, okay. All right, item number eighteen. Discuss and consider resolution number one thirty fiscal year twenty-two sixty-six regarding the casting of votes for the twenty-six, twenty-seven Young County Appraisal District Board Directors. So we do this every two years. Entities get votes as to who the board of directors are. The nominees this year are Jeff Dickinson, Z.T. Burkett, Ben Wilson, Kyle Henson and Mike Sykes. We get one thousand five hundred and eighteen votes out of the five thousand votes. There's only, of, of the entities that vote, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve entities get a vote, but of all the, all the nominations, only five people were nominated. We nominated Mike Sykes to represent Young County on that board. Would someone be inclined to make a motion to nominate Mike's?
Or to vote still, if he's interested?
He's still interested? To vote for Mike Sykes and apply all of our votes to him? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Wiley. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So we'll need to make five zero. Uh, yeah, so the resolution is, I, I've set it up for it, just I'm the only one who signs it, but I'm just registering the vote on here, so. All right, item number nineteen, discuss and consider accepting or rejecting the gazebo bids that be opened on August twenty-third of twenty-twenty-five. Commissioner Wiley?
We decided what we would do, just the bids come out to be signed, we just go ahead and reject the law and put that on a different item in the future. And then we reject all bids.
All right, we have a motion from.
I'm making a motion or you want to make your motion?
You can make it.
All right, we got a motion from Commissioner Cresswell. We have a second. Second from Commissioner Wiley to reject all the gazebo bids. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number twenty, discuss and consider the subdivision application regarding Promise Land Valley, what a name, subdivision on the RG Leupold Road. Commissioner Craig?
We are still discussing this with Promise Valley. At this point in time, I have not made any changes that we could go ahead with. Table this for now.
And the concern is, well, the major concern is the lack of water.
Lack of water.
That there's no, there's no access to piped water and well water tests are before the test.
One entrance and exit from this problem with multiple locks.
Okay.
It's a slightly, slightly issued more than anything.
Gotcha. All right, we'll just agree to table that.
You know, that's, that's one thing. If the state of Texas is trying to legalize this, what we can't, can't do with our regs. But this is what we have as a tool to protect the people that buys that land and protects us. We make sure that they have, there's a new rule now is if you have no water that comes in from a rural water company or something like that, they have to run a test to see if they got capable enough water for the amount of houses that they don't provide. But this is an example of that right there. This one helps us on that.
They're well tested, less than two gallons a day.
For, for twenty-two, twenty-three homes.
Yes, lots.
That's what we're trying to do, we're trying to protect the people. Somebody's an outsider, turns in bills is, please, we're the management.
Well, I mean, it's like a two hundred and fifty home subdivision they tried to do on me down there at the county line. It's gonna cost them over four million dollars just to get the water down there. Besides the electric, so that's what stopped that. Now it's a high danger range.
Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider burn restrictions. It is so.
It'll burn. I guarantee it'll burn.
Here's the scary thing, I know somebody got a ticket yesterday for burning and they put in AI, is Young County gonna burn restriction? And AI said, no, that we lifted it in November, is what AI said. And we did not lift it in November. There's nowhere where that's written, but AI made that up. And so unfortunately, not gonna say tonight, but we got a five hundred dollar ticket and we all know who this person is.
Did it lay it on you doing it by yourself or did it was a double port lifting? Because I don't know what AI done on that. Because I don't know what AI done on that.
Well, I don't know. We could try. He took a picture of it and showed me this morning and it worked out that AI said it was it was lifted. One other item that's sitting on our agenda, we're scheduled to have a meeting next week. It's Thanksgiving week. We've had two meetings in a row. I will not be here next week. We don't really have anything because we've had two meetings in a row. We don't really have it's not on there. Do we want to meet next week, which would be fine, Commissioner Wiley could leave the meeting? Or do we want to just cancel it and and have the next meeting be the first one in December? That in fact, I won't be here next week regardless, but what do we want to do?
I make a motion to postpone it to December eighth.
I need vouchers paid, but if we can put them in and y'all can buy just sign off.
Yeah, we have to do that. I'll check that.
Okay. So we all all favor of postponing the or canceling the next meeting and then just following up with the next meeting?
Yeah, just.
Okay, then we will we will officially. You're going to miss it? Well, we can, I can Skype you, I can Skype you. Unfortunately, I can't see in person. I'm going to be out of town. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Go with a second.
All right, motion for Commissioner Wiley is second for Commissioner. I'm in favor of adjourned. Oh, did you get the?
No. I have it here in there. I was telling someone I got scared to come back down. I'm going to get.
The one you gave us.
That's okay. Ask Mark. Sorry. You know, the problem. They got, they got. They got. How are you doing?
I'm good.
So all of. There's a. We can vote on all of them.
They made the money. So we have.
Four times, they did together, man.
So we're going to have.
Okay.
All right. Right now, no busy.
That was good. I mean, I have. I got taken over, so. I didn't miss it.
Right now. I think I think I'm. You're okay. I'm only. Everybody wants to know. I want to. Make sure. You go.
You should have.
I'm sorry.
Wait, no, wait.
No, that's the one thing. They didn't.
But I got.
No, no, we're. I know. We said. We should know. We don't know.
Polls. With the problem of the water, it's the way it was designed. It's going all the way over there. It's the top.
Hey.
There was a. There was a race in the middle of it. And most of the folks had held up.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad somebody else.